I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting of Board of Trustees of Smith Vocational Agricultural High School, Tuesday, April 26, 2022. I'd like to have a call to order, please.
Michael Kaling.
Present.
Julie Spencer Robinson, present. Richard de Padro.
Present.
Mayor Sharra.
Present.
Dr. Provost is absent.
Thank you. At this time, everybody stand for flag of the United States of America. In the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, I would like to read the mission statement of Smith Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs. Is there any participation by the public this evening? Our call, Mary Ann.
Good afternoon, Councilor Mary Ann DeBarge. As you all know, I was the only councilor who did not support placing the dog kennel at the control facility where the moose club is located. I'm here tonight of great support, which we have talked about, I don't know how many times with the previous mayor, of trying to locate the facility here at Smith Vocational. It is absolutely in the right direction, the right direction. And I want to thank our mayor, Gina Louise Sharra, for going on site and taking a look. Your eyes tell it all. We look at Smith Vocational School as a great school, and there's no question about it. We look at your curriculum, and you have animal science. Here we go. We're opening the doors. This is a fantastic school. I think placing it here is in the right direction. If we look just coming out and going down the road, we have a veterinarian clinic there if the dogs are in stress. This will make our city one of the best of having a facility in a school, a Smith Vocational High School, which I said again is great, and I'll continue on saying that. And I know our mayor will help make the right decision of locating a dog facility in a shelter here at Smith Vocational. Our mayor, our previous mayor, David Narkowitz, I don't know how many times he tried to get Smith Volk to be able to open the doors. And because of Greenfield Community College at that time, had opened up an LPN nursing school. Now's the time. The doors are going to be open. Please, tonight, when you make a decision, make it right. Let's be one of the greatest vocational schools in the area. Also, I think if you look at another curriculum for our students here at Smith Volk, is bringing them into that facility, working along with our police control officers. What more could we ask? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Eric?
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm Benjamin Spencer, President of Northampton. And I'm here also in support of this kennel being located at Smith Vocational. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I just redone a few words. I'm guardly optimistic about the proposal regarding the animal control facility here at Smith Vocational. I'd like to commend everyone involved to work together to resolve this issue. It seems to me to be a win-win, and this is Northampton's at its best. Engaged citizens, responsive government, forward-thinking institutions, everybody collaborating to solve a problem that needs to be solved. I'd like to applaud everyone's efforts, and I'm grateful to all of you for trying to get the best outcome possible. Thank you.
Appreciate your input. This one, you ever hold on to this?
Well, I didn't really plan anything, but I'm a fisherman, and I'm from Pine's Edge Drive, which abuts the 196 cookout where the facility was going to go. And this seems like a perfect opportunity. There's no residents around, there's no conservation area, and as everyone has said, to tie it in with the school just seems like a fantastic opportunity. So I commend you for coming up with this prospect, and I hope that it goes so. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mary Ann. Cindy?
Hi, Cindy Womat, and I'm the coordinator for the union here at Smith Vocational. And my concern is about our students, about our members, our faculty, our staff, and safety. That's my number-one concern, because this is going to bring more people to our campus. So we just want to know, when are these people going to be on our campus? What part of campus? How are we going to isolate anything? And truly, how are we going to keep our staff, students, and everyone else that lives on our campus safe? Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any special questions?
No.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to do business. And you have a motion, a second, for discussion or possible action to vote for an animal control facility on the Smith Vocational Agricultural High School campus.
Move to a quick second.
I'd like to ask Dr. Hooker to speak on the subject.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give the board a little bit of background. We talked about the background with the subcommittee that we had a few weeks ago, but just to bring the full board up to speed, and the public who's in attendance this evening, some of the history of where we were and how we're here this evening. So just to reference Mayor Narkowitz, Mayor Narkowitz did reach out to me, I'll say, multiple times over the last two or three years, asking there's a need from the city to have an animal control facility, and is there any space, any location here on campus that we could house such a facility? And as already mentioned, we don't have any available space on campus at that time. As already mentioned, the Greenfield Community College building was being leased by Greenfield Community College for the LPN program, and there was no other available space on campus. At the same time, as a school, we've been looking at our animal science program, and how do we expand a particular program? Specifically, we want to move beyond just simply the livestock concentration. We've been looking at the compena animal concentration, perhaps some point down the road, a vet assisting program, but specifically around the compena animals, which are the small animals. How do we expand into that? But we had the same issue. We have no space for such a program. So we actually hired an architect, this is before the pandemic. We looked at perhaps a new building down back, and the price tag was going to be about $2.5 to $3 million. And we're looking at fundraising options for that particular program, and then the pandemic hit, to be honest. So as Mayor Narkowitz and I were speaking about this, we saw the potential relationship, but the timelines weren't lining up. For us to raise $2.5 to $3 million to build this particular facility, to expand our curriculum, wasn't going to be happening overnight. And it sounded to me, through Mayor Narkowitz, this had to happen overnight. So those were the discussions. Last summer, we also reconnected. We looked at a couple other spots, school property, and that wasn't going to work as well. So those conversations sort of ended at that point. So I just wanted to, again, recognize Mayor Narkowitz, wherever he is right now, that he did his due diligence. He did reach out to the school on multiple occasions, but it wasn't working out where we didn't have a particular program, we had no space, we didn't have any facilities, and we weren't going to raise any money anytime soon for a new facility. Fast forward to this year. So the board, a couple months ago, voted to not renew the lease for the Greenfield Community College building. So we are going to take that building back as of this summer. We do plan on expanding into that compena animal concentration this coming, it won't be this coming school year, most likely the following school year, hopefully begin to offer that particular concentration. So as that ball began to move over the last couple of months, I think there were some discussions about, you know, where is the current status of the animal control facility? We know in the media, there's been some different discussions in some different locations, and that sort of then started this whole conversation at this point. So that's why we're sitting here this evening. We did have a subcommittee, just to reference, not to reference the public, but to highlight some concerns that as the administration, we did share with the city. The big two topics I keep harping on would be liability and responsibility. How do we handle the liability concerns, and how do we handle the responsibility concerns? And I would just ask, I don't want to steal the thunder of both of you, but if you want to talk about some of those, as a school, my main concern was liability, responsibility, and once those two concerns were sort of alleviated and mitigated, I felt more comfortable. I do see a potential partnership with our students. As long as those concerns are mitigated, I see some potential. But this is not a program that at the school we're taking on, which made me feel even better. So anyways, I'd like to have those answers made known to the public. For those who are kind of wondering where the space is when we took the trip down back, if anybody's familiar with the campus, we have the animal science complex down back, we have what we are calling the Greenfield Community College building, is that white building down back. We have some old tennis courts that have solar panels on there right now. There's a small little parking lot that's sort of in that area, and that parking lot then goes down Orchard Road, down to the Orchard and Pastry that we have down back. Looking at that current small little parking lot, that's sort of between the Greenfield Community College building, the tennis courts, and that Orchard Road, that plot right there, which also kind of abuts up against the hospital parking lot down back, that's sort of the area that we were looking at earlier. So that's where we started with Mayor Narkowitz and I up to this point, and I think that the stars were beginning to align, the concerns, I shared the concerns from the school perspective. I turn it back to the board for more discussion, but.
You're on here.
Sure. Well, I mean, and I'm happy to sort of talk about it from the city side. So, you know, as we've talked about, the quest for a very needed animal control facility has been many, many, many years, and it's a quest that I inherited from my predecessor, who we've talked about, Mayor Narkowitz, who, as has been said, really searched tirelessly throughout the city and really did due diligence on this. And during my transition time with Mayor Narkowitz, we went over all of the locations that had been discussed, including here, and they were all, you know, discussed how they were not currently possibilities. So it's been a really, really challenging situation. And right when I was taking office in January, there was a breakthrough on a location in the city that the city had been interested in for years, but had been too expensive for acquisition. And this is the former Moose Lodge at the end of Cook Avenue. And there, right in the winter, the seller had agreed on a price that was attainable for the city and we thought could make work. So we moved forward on that site, which had, you know, I think had some real advantages because it abuts key conservation area and would continue access to that, and we were offering to continue parking for people there. So, and it also is in more of a remote area than some of the other areas that we've looked at. But as we all know, there was a lot of concern from the neighborhoods around there. So a few days after the council voted to approve the purchase of Cook Avenue, I was talking to my colleague trustee, Dr. Spencer Robinson, and she had been reading about the vote in the paper and how hard it was, and she suggested that we, with the changes that had just happened around the LPN program and the interest in growing the animal science program, that maybe we could open up conversations again. So once I got over my shock, having been told this was never going to be a possibility, I reached out to Superintendent Liko Hooker and to start the conversation, as you said, and we had a great site visit. And Chief Casper, who's here tonight, was there, as well as Pat McCarthy, who was just actually announced today, is our new Director of Central Services. So we walked the site, and I think we answered each other's questions, and we're happy to talk, including the questions that you raised, and you just raised again. And I think there is, you know, we're happy to clarify about how this building, the animal control facility, will be used and who will have access to it. And Chief, if you'd like to talk to that, I'd be happy to hand it over to you. But, you know, this is what brought us here today, and I think that this is, as Council DeBarge said, is a really exciting step forward. And for me, you know, the sort of the synergy between this building that the city desperately needs and the educational programming here, I think, is what makes my heart sing. So I'm really excited about it. Chief?
Thanks. Yeah, so without a doubt, definitely a need for an animal control facility. I think we're well beyond that conversation, but I can share with you right now that I have a snake and a turtle in the station, like, it's just, these challenges go on that, and there are long-term tenants with us for now. So it's just the type of example where we have officers walking by, the snake actually got out the other day, so it's not ideal. So I don't need to explain to you the need for it. Without a doubt, we have a lot of animals coming into our care, sometimes short-term, sometimes a little bit longer, depending on the situation. And so we need a facility desperately. So I'm thankful to Mayor Narkowitz and Mayor Sharra, who have now taken this torch and, you know, gone on with it, trying to get us settled into a place in the city. As far as how the facility would be used, I think that's a question a lot of people have, and I want to make sure we're really clear about that, because I certainly understand one of the concerns that was raised about increasing the amount of traffic coming into the facility. And this is not a facility that we intend to have open to the public. It's not an adoption agency or a type of building where members of the public are going to be coming and picking up animals or adopting out animals or anything like that. This is a city facility that would be accessed just by city employees, and those city employees, in most cases, would be our animal control officer, Don Ubelaker, or our part-time animal control officer. Or in their off-hours, it would be a police officer. So if in the middle of the night, an officer picks up a stray animal, they would bring the animal to this facility and kind of check it in, and then our animal control officer would come into the facility in the morning and, you know, hopefully reunite the animal with an owner, if we're able to do that, and, you know, provide care and cleaning, feeding, everything else. So that's our intent with the facility. It has some kennels in there designed just for dogs, and then it has a cat area, so there's kind of two separate areas for those different animals. And then we also have a quarantine room. There are laws around animals when you're holding on to them, they have to be separate from other animals, so there's a quarantine room for that. So hopefully that addresses your questions about, you know, how frequently the facility would be visited, or if the public would be there. And beyond that, you know, regarding liability and students, I certainly understand, and staff as well, I certainly understand those concerns. You know, most of the animals that we have come in are household pets, they're domestic animals that we have that are lost or have been abandoned or are neglected, and they're being held on to as evidence in a case if they were neglected in a home. So most of our animals are not vicious or dangerous animals, but certainly if we came across an animal that we felt like really should only be handled by the animal control officer, that is what would happen. And we would have to work out those details as we move forward. This would be a new partnership. But when I consider, you know, that concern and other concerns of students and staff, that's how I see that happening, is we have an identified animal that is a risk, and we just are sure that that's an animal that students and staff wouldn't have contact with. But our animal control officer has been, you know, we've had an animal control officer for seven years, we have officers handling animals, we've never had any sort of, you know, serious injury from any of our animals that we've had.
Excellent. Any input?
No, but it's a great facility to have a dog kennel.
Great.
Seems like a very synergistic, very.
Excellent. And I could just add from there. After that conversation, and just to piggyback back to the educational side of the House, after I heard those explanations, looking at how can we have the relationship between the school and the city, you know, I think we're obviously looking at our compena animal concentration once it gets up and running. And my main concern was, again, would this become a responsibility, not only supervision-wise, but cost when it comes to the feed? And we agreed that the feeding cost would be from the city, it would be no budget implication from the school. As far as educational oversight, educational experience, there'd be no responsibility for the staff to be in there tending to the animals, but it'd be sort of this supplemental piece where, my understanding is, a lot of animal control facilities in the area, a lot of times they open themselves up to volunteers to come in and walk the dog or whatever. And back to the concern about minimizing the public on campus, that potential of walking the dog hypothetically could be an experience for some of our students. Our students could be the dog walkers hypothetically, through the animal science program. So there is that potential interaction there with our students and staff and animals, which I think could be an educational benefit for our side. There's another component, we already mentioned, is we have a criminal justice program. And within that program is an experience where they can sort of shadow or work with the animal control officer to see, you know, how do you deal with the dogs? Not to have a direct impact with the dogs, but so I think there's an educational value potentially, as long as, again, we're not taking on the responsibility of the cost, but there's more of a supplemental piece. The other piece is, as we begin to expand into compena animals, there's an investment that we have to have as a school around our facilities. And there's a potential where I think if we work together in the planning of the facility, and what do you need in the facility as far as grooming and washing stations? If there's one or two washing stations in the facility, you know, we need to have washing stations and grooming stations for our program, could we sort of work together? So I think there's a potential benefit there. But those are all discussions, but I walked away with some positives I just want to share with the full board, so.
Yeah, I agree that one of the things that I thought was exciting was that there's potential for sort of shared infrastructure in the building of our building to, you know, what you need to accommodate with the building that you have, that we can work together and share some of those resources.
And it would be an understanding that if we know we're in school from 7:40 to 2:12, and if our animal science program needs to have access to the grooming station or washing station on certain days, at certain times, then we just work with the city to say that facility would be off limits to the city, because our students will be in there. So I think we can make those plans work. Eric, go ahead.
So as I have stated, we have a motion and a second. We've had this discussion.
Can I ask some questions? Questions, too?
Right. Thank you. First of all, I think that the serendipity factor is just delightful. You know, you said the stars aligned for this, and I think that is true, that it happened in such a short period of time, where you're looking at expanding the animal science program and the, you know, that we have to have an animal control facility someplace in Northampton. Do we have an arrangement with a different municipality, or have we always kept our animals in Northampton? We had an arrangement, it was a year-to-year arrangement with Amherst. They have their own animal control facility. We had been with them for a while, then we left them for a little while and used a private business, then they closed, and now we're back to Amherst again. Yeah, gotcha. So this would be true for the city and first and foremost true for the school. How, a few questions, you answered one, which is how the students would be potentially interacting with the animals on campus, and I think that, you know, you addressed that for me for sure. What size would the facility be? Do we have an idea about the square footage of it?
It's about 2,000?
About 2,000, I think just under 2,000 square feet. For the current facility, but, I'm sorry, no. But it may be moderately adjusted based on the needs of students here, so that's one thing we still need to work out, if we're going to be adding in grooming stations, or we have one wash station now, it's going to need to be more, so those details still would need to be ironed out. Awesome, and I certainly advocate for some kind of educational space integrated into the facility, you know, observation space as well as space to work with the animals. There is a training room on the end of the facility, just so you know. So in addition to kind of the traditional kennels that we're probably all visualizing, there is a room at the end, which we had planned to have as kind of a, when you have an animal, you have to do kind of a safety check of that animal to make sure that they are going to be good for adopting out, that they're a good fit for that. So there's a training room on the end that certainly could have that dual use, would be a great space for that. Awesome. About how many animals would be housed in this facility over the course of a year or month to month, or whatever kind of numbers you can provide? Yeah, that's a great question and one that I've been asked a lot, and I apologize in advance, that we're really just, because of our current situation, we kind of have animals stashed into a whole bunch of places. We use Amherst sometimes, we're fostering animals in private homes, we had a change in animal control officer. So I can estimate a number for you, which I would say somewhere between the nights that would have animals, because there's a difference between the number of animals and then, because you, you know, and then you may have three animals one night, right? Yeah, okay, gotcha. Yeah, so how many nights? So how many nights? I would estimate around 150 in a year. That's just a rough estimate. I mean, we have these animals in the station now, these are going to be long-term animals, so for these animals that we have, like, they're probably going to be with us for two months. Those are rarer cases, but that can happen. So it's very unpredictable. Most of our animals come in, they're with us for one night because they're lost, and we return them to an owner. Others, we never find an owner, we have to hold on to them for a minimum of 10 days, that's the minimum by the state law, and then we have to find what's going to happen next. Most of them we adopt out after that. Any more than 10 days would, well, so 10 days is a state, then we're like, oh, we have to find an adoptable home for them. So then we may spend a little while doing that, maybe a week or something. And then the only other animals that stay longer than that are the ones that are evidence in a case, and those are the ones that may be long-term stays. We've had a few of those, but not very many, like a handful over the years. Thank you, that was a lot of information. It's complicated, and I wish I could give you a better number, but that's why it's complicated. So your staff would be feeding and watering the animals, not the school staff? Right, our animal control officers would be feeding, and when they're out or on vacation, our officers would do that. Yep. And then my last question is around the concerns of the safety on campus. This campus is so porous, it just, you know, I feel that every time I come to the campus, it's the design of it. It's also wonderful for my children, who are students here, because it felt a little bit more like college when they came here. They loved going from building to building. It's really nice. But it also comes with that kind of, you know, the liability of not being able to monitor, you don't have a central access point where you can monitor people coming and going. So I would want to know what we might be able to put in place to help with that monitoring, if the city employees, how they're going to be identified as city employees? Will it be extremely obvious to people on campus? Will they be checking in at the front, in the main office? Will other people be notified that these folks are on campus? How, like, is it unpredictable, is it predictable? How will the people here know who is supposed to be coming and going, and who's not supposed to be coming and going? And that's going to be very challenging.
Who's it handled with Greenfield?
Silence, maybe. The public thinks that they can come to directly claim their animals, and that, my understanding is they'll go to the police station to get, yeah, so they think they can come here, and then those are more visitors here. So how do we deter those folks?
How is it handled with Greenfield or previously with Parks and Recs?
Good question.
They have direct access to the building, there's no checking in in the main office.
And people on campus are comfortable with that?
I think over the years, it's become second nature, but I do share your concerns. My main concern as well was sort of that liability and just access to the public, by the public, to the campus. From a security standpoint, how do we ensure that we have 150 students on campus who are safe? We have a director of security who does a wonderful job, he's constantly roaming the campus, but it's just one extra layer of supervision that we have. So it is a real concern. There's no way to sugarcoat that. So how do we, again, mitigate that? I think it's communication and some favorment agreement. I don't think they, they being the animal control officer, I don't think would necessarily have to check into the main office, I would not anticipate that as an expectation, but if we know who they are, I think it'd be great for Mr. Brown, our director of security, to know who they are. And beyond that, what happens when we have a community member show up? We had a community member this morning showed up on campus and probably should have been next door, to be honest. So we have those interactions. We have a hospital literally next door, and we have patients who are on campus every once in a while. So how do we work together to minimize the public being on campus?
When you talk to the owners of pets who are lost and found and to be reunited, you'll make clear to them that they are to come to the police station to claim the pet? Yes, so that would be part of the answer, certainly effective communication for an animal control officer to say to people, I will meet you at 29th Center Street to, you know, provide you with your animal. That being said, certainly it's possible that people may wander onto the, you know, onto the campus, and I think that's going to be a matter of making sure we have really good signage on the building that says, no public access, call this number, and then they would call our dispatch center and be told, like, you can't get your animal there. And we'll have to make that very clear with our animal control officer, that no exchanges are to happen here. And further, I would just add that our animal control officer is in a vehicle that's labeled "Animal Control." Great, and that's the person coming on campus? That's the person coming on campus, and she wears a shirt and a jacket that says "Animal Control" on it, and then obviously the other folks coming in would be our officers who are certainly identifiable. Thank you. Yep.
Will there be any opportunity for the carpentry cabinet-making and plumbing electrical shops in the building of this facility?
So that was part of the discussion that we had with the subcommittee, and the short answer is yes.
Great.
So depending on timing, depending on the scope of the project, some of our programs, I think, are more flexible and can get things done in a more timely fashion, so depending on the timing and everything else, yes, that's part of the discussion.
So I understand there seems to be a plan already in place, was an architect hired, or what's the current facility look like in the planning?
Just so happens. So this is not planned for this location, this was for one of the iterations of locations. But it gives you, and so, you know, this might be modified, but it identifies sort of what the needs are for the building and kind of a rough idea, so if it can pass us away.
All right, is this what David had? Is this what David had in the past?
Yes.
I think I've seen this.
Yes.
One thing I'd point out, as you're glancing at that, because I think it's an interesting safety component that might be a concern that you would have about safety, is if you look at the right side of that building, it has a sally port. So when the vehicles are pulling in with an animal, if you have concerns about an animal getting loose, they'll pull directly into the sally port. The garage door will close behind them, and then the animals will be brought into the facility. That's great. Will there be some kind of soundproofing built into the building?
Yes, we've discussed at length that everything for the building.
We've got lots of animals here on campus.
Yes.
So we're used to the sounds of animals.
Yeah, but this building is designed to have.
I said to somebody today, the dogs can bark until the cows come home. They're going to be next door.
Great. Thank you.
What other things?
I've seen it.
Thank you. It's nice looking dog.
It is. It's an asset.
Yeah, it is a tool. Exactly. Oh, nice. I see little locations. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
So going back, we do have a motion and a second, and discussion has happened. We're ready to vote on the animal control facility on the Smith Vocational Agricultural High School campus. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For that, sure. We don't need to read anything.
All right. Future business. On May 17th, we have a regular Board of Trustees meeting from 5:00, starting at 5:00 here in the library. June 21st, regular Board of Trustees meeting at 5:00 o'clock. Upcoming events, exciting stuff. February 4th, Excellence in Teaching Awards banquet at 5:30 at Lock Haven. May 31st, senior banquet, 6:00 p.m., Garden House at Look Park on May 31st. June 1st, senior awards night, 6:00 p.m. at our cafeteria here on campus. And June 2nd, graduation, 6:00 p.m. at John Gregory Hall. So we have officially said the pandemic is over, as far as the school. But this time, I'd ask for a new journal.
So move to the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for everybody attending.